Hello friends and welcome to the October 18th edition of Weekly Witness, Texas Impacts Weekly Opportunity for mainstream Texans of faith to learn about public policy issues here in the great state of Texas and have a conversation about how you can engage in the process. My name is Scott Aden, if you are host and Texas Impacts Engagement Director. And today's episode is brought to you by Friendship West Baptist Church and Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas. So we have finally, maybe, made it to the end of a very long legislative year. And today will be our legislative wrap up episode of the third special session of the Texas Legislature. Again, finally. And full disclosure, Josh and I are recording this on Friday because I'll be doing my civic duty and jury duty on Monday. So if anything exciting happened over the weekend, you'll have to wait for a future episode to talk about that. I did mention Josh, and so we are excited to, once again, welcome to the program, Texas Impacts Advocacy Director Josh Houston. Hey Josh.
Hey.
Hey, do you remember early this year when like maybe March or April, we started polling Legislative Engagement Group members and rapid response folks? And that, hey, what, what kind of content do you want from Weekly Witness during the interim? And then like, we've never gotten there. So you remember those? Those were good times, right?
Oh, about how we expected to be well into the interim and not in the 230th day of the 87?
Right. This has been a year unlike any other. So just remind us, and maybe, I don't want to have you speculate too much, but are we finally done? Or are we gonna get called back for special session four and five and six and 12, or where do you think we are?
Unclear. I think we can, we can safely say that we're done for 2021. As safe as anything is, I should say, in this business. But we have three different, here's why. We have three, so they sunny died on Monday, a day early because they got all their work done. And we're going to talk about that here in a second. But rumors of a fourth had been swirling with staff I talked to from every faction of every party. But where it ended on Monday night was with Lieutenant Governor saying that they would not be back for the, basically, he said, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas, which was a signal that we're not coming back this year. Although this Lieutenant Governor has called for a, for a special session. So I think that, that, that signal says that the Lieutenant Governor would like to push for one in 2022. And then we had a second statement by the Speaker of the House, who, he indicated that we might finally be done. Period. Because he said this would be the final experience. I can't remember the exact quote, I'm paraphrasing, but it would be the final time many people who are retiring would, would, would be doing their duty and their work on the House floor. And there were a number of speeches, kind of farewell speeches that, you know, happen, it's a member to member thing, that indicate that the House believes that at least. And then you had subsequently with all these rumors swirling, a day or two later, the Governor then said, and I can't remember the exact quote, but, but that it was not necessary at this time. With that said, when we kind of talk about the things they did and the things that they didn't do, you get it, you'll get an indication about what would be on the call for a fourth one and the, the kinds of primary pressures on the Governor mainly, but also the rest of the Legislature. That would work both ways, actually, very kind of divisive things even within the Republican Party that, that, that some folks want to push. So we're going to have some inter intra, anyway, politics internal to Republican Party that are going to occur before the, the primary in March. So I think the window you're looking for is January through March of, if there's going to be a fourth, it would, it would be during that window.
Well, I don't know if we as an organization like have a position on when we want them to come back. But let me just say for myself, I will be very grateful if we're not spending Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays watching the House of Representatives and Congress, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can probably safely say that we think they should be done. I, I will go out on a limb, having not recorded that one, to say that organizationally, I feel pretty safe that the, that my boss and our ultimate boss, the Board Directors, would prefer that they not come back for anymore.
I think that's probably a safe assumption. So let's go ahead and jump in. So with these special sessions, we'll remind our listeners that the Legislature can only, I guess, the, the Governor will only consider items that are on the call of the special session. And so can you remind us, first off, what, what was on the call this time?
Yeah, so the initial call for the third happened back on September 7th. They announced that it would begin on the 20th of September, and I said that the Governor announced that it would occur on the 20th of September. The initial items on the call were kind of known mostly, we knew they had to do redistricting. The Legislature really, really insisted that they be involved in appropriating money from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. So that was the second item on the call. And then we have, again, trans children playing sports in public schools that was added to the call instantly, as it had been in the first and the second. And then you had, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, you had redoing a bill the Governor vetoed initially, having to do with the unlawful restraint of dogs. And then finally, and this is where it gets interesting, you had on the call regulating vaccine mandates by state and local governments. And I say interestingly because this changed a couple of weeks, about three weeks into the session. You then had additional items added to the call. So on the 22nd, about two days in, the Governor added property tax relief or reductions to the call, and then added prohibiting bail in certain cases to the call. Again, it had been on the call in the second and failed in the second, and we'll talk about it failing again in the third here in a bit. Fast forward a week from that, we're kind of into the second week of session, and we'll talk about the details of this too. But you had a new item, increasing criminal penalties for illegal voting. We will talk about the full details of how that came to be an item on the call. On the 11th of October, so about a 10 days after that, you had, right at the last week of session, you had the Governor add, this is where he changed his position and said, we're going to prohibit vaccine mandates by any entity, not just state and local government. We're not just going to regulate it, we're going to prohibit it. And we're not just going to prohibit it for local and state government, we're going to prohibit it for private employers too. And that caused a bit of a flap of doo at the end, and may have encouraged them to get the congressional maps done. And then finally, in literally the last three days, at the Lieutenant Governor's request, higher education funding was added to the call. And what was relatively non-controversial, a way to approve some bonds for construction projects at universities.
So let's jump in and we'll, we'll start going through what passed first. And the big high profile set of bills that, you know, you mentioned kind of had to be passed was the, the redistricting bills. And so want to walk us through what happened on redistricting?
Yeah, so every 10 years, when there's a census, the Constitution says in a regular session, although this is a special session, so there's a court case pending on that issue. And the next regular session, the Legislature shall redraw the lines and reapportion the population. So Texas, of course, has experienced growth, not just people moving around, but more people moving in. So the average House district size is going from roughly 170 to 194,000 people. But that's not the kind of the top line of the news cycle. The top line is, and we're going to hear a lot about this, of course, they gerrymander things in a partisan way. That's been done since, you know, Patrick Henry first drew James Madison into a Federalist District or an anti, anti-Federalist District. He was a Federalist and then he switched after he won his reelection. But we've been doing it for, that's, that's been true for a long time. The racial aspects are where the case law really, that's where the arguments will be in, in the, in the court cases. And this is one of those things where the old axiom, what, is not what they say, it's what they do. And here's what they did. Texas experienced 4 million, roughly 4 million new people moved to the state. 95% of that growth was from people who are not Anglo or white. And yet, the number of seats that are majority minority districts decreased. So the representation by minorities in the Legislature, frankly, if, if people vote on racial lines and, and if you look at, it's just a fact that, that, that often our parties are breaking down on racial lines these days. You would have fewer people of color in office despite being the overwhelming majority of growth, not just this decade, which was 95%, but the decade before that, it was 88%. So this is a thing, and this is not representational government. This is packing people of color into one district, it's just math. 95% growth, but a decrease in representation. It's a fact. So that's the big top line. The other thing about redistricting is, is when it looms over a session, as this one did, you know, it's going to decide political futures. And individuals can't help, elected officials can't help but look at their own individual prospects. Because when you draw those lines, your future is being decided. You're either going to have, be able to advance whatever your goals are, or maintain your office, or your future may be ended. And that will happen, so, I mean, that happens to the, that happens every cycle, it's just inevitable. So this was the big item, this was the number one. It was HB1 for a reason, the Speaker said he wasn't going to pass any other bills until they got this big nasty thing out of the way. Because it is, it is very interpersonal. There's, there's kind of no way around it. When one person draws, when one person with a little more influence does a thing that, that disadvantages you, there's going to be a collision and it doesn't really matter the part, I mean, it happens between parties, but it happens within parties. There really are kind of no friends in redistricting. And, and if, the, the House was already super cut up and mad at one another interpersonally over the, the quorum break. And redistricting just really exacerbated that. Nevertheless, the, the, it initially, and I want to make one final point on redistricting before we leave it. Initially, it looked like we were going to have a fourth special session over the congressional maps. The members of Congress were not happy. The, the House got worked out, the Senate got worked out, the State Board of Education was relatively uncontroversial. But the congressional maps, there was a big standoff between the House and the Senate. And I, this is just an analysis, but it appears certainly, a bit of speculative analysis, but it certainly appears by behavior. There was a signal by the Chair of redistricting that, that he was willing to take us to a fourth special session over the congressional maps initially. And then in the last week, as more items got added to the call, that may have played a motivating factor for the members of the Legislature to get their work done and to get out of town and to do what they needed to do to avoid a fourth special session, and certainly looked that way, anyway.
I don't want to move us on quite yet, just a quick question about what this means moving forward. So I, I think, I think part of what it means is that primary season is now underway, now that there are maps. And every time I get on Twitter, there's somebody else making announcements, they're running for something else or retiring. So one of, one of the things that it does mean is that we now have maps and it also, I believe, means that the March primary date is, as of now.
There, there will absolutely be lawsuits, but those lawsuits, they make changes, but they don't, not the, not, not the size and scope of changes that, that would cause chaos. They, they kind of tinker with the margins. It matters a lot for one or two members, it may, but it's not going to drastically redo 150 House seats. Most, almost, almost, my, most likely, most likely.
Things could happen, but, but as of now, we're looking at.
But right, my point of saying that is to say, yeah, I mean, there are a, a number of retirements that have been announced that, that were planned and then officially announced, I'm sure. And there have been a number of announcements made about candidates running, and they now know what they're running for. I think you're going to continue to see announcements in the news almost on a daily basis for, well, I mean, it could be right up until the filing deadline in December. But I think you'll see most people move here in the next, next couple of weeks.
So next big item that, that passed were the, the bills relating to the budget. And folks are interested in kind of getting into the weeds tomorrow on those. We had Evan Deluna Castro from EveryTex in a couple of weeks ago, but what, what ended up happening on the budget side?
Yeah, so they did appropriate those funds from the ARPA, American Recovery, American Rescue Plan Act. It's a very similar thing to what they did in the economic crisis of 2008, 2009, where it was additional federal money that they got to put into various agencies. And in this case, some of it was indeed reimbursement. A good chunk of it went to the Unemployment Compensation Fund. But there were also a number of items that went to things like the Department of State Health Services, which obviously had a number of big COVID-19 related expenses. You also had, you know, 500 million added for broadband infrastructure, which is kind of a capital investment project that, that does make a big difference in people's lives in rural Texas and also has economic benefits. So it's, it's, it's economic stimulus as well as reimbursement for expenses related to COVID. And that, that they, you know, every appropriation has, you know, a negotiation that occurs between House, Senate, and ultimately the Governor too. And all that happened, that happened in the very last days, that was one of the must do things that they had to get done to avoid a fourth special session. And, and they largely got that done. They got it done.
Right, moving on to one that we have talked about a lot on this program, the trans children in sports bill. So the anti-trans bullying bill, or bill, what, what ended up happening there?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so you have the members really upset with one another over the quorum break. You have them additionally upset over redistricting. And then they tossed this in the room. It was a highly emotional night in the State House, which had been the firewall against these bills. The Senate has largely, there's not any way to, well, there's only electoral things that can change the Senate at this point. The House, there was, it was defeated in the regular and the first and the second, but in the third, it, it passed. The Florida Bay was, was quite emotional. The members and the staff were, were quite emotional in the building. Because the bill is really just aimed at picking on a population. There, there's no other way to describe it or its motives. In theory, I mean, it requires schoolchildren to compete on the sports team that corresponds to the gender assigned at the time of a child's birth. The previous versions of the bill made a distinction between intersex and gender identity changes that came later. Those two things have a kind of a Venn diagram of relationship. Of course, we've known about the biological scientific issues of being intersex since antiquity. What it does in practicality, what makes it nefarious, is that it, it either forces a child, an intersex and/or transgender child, it forces them out of sports, or it makes them reveal private medical information in order to play and play in a, in a really, a way that would really stand out in a way that a child does not want to stand out. It is completely unnecessary. There are no known incidences in Texas of a cisgender girl being disadvantaged by competing alongside a transgender girl, none. On which team a transgender athlete competes is really a question for medical science. Whether or not someone gets an unfair advantage because of the medical therapy is a, is a scientific issue for medical science, it's not a thing the Legislature or the political branch of government is good at, or really even capable of determining. And there was no known problems with the existing UIL policy. It really was just straight up or down, culture war vote. And unlike some previous bills, it's going to do, it's not symbolic, it does real harm.
I will say, I, I spoke at a church in Houston this week, this last weekend. And this was the issue that they talked to me the most about, or the, the bill that they talked to me the most about. Because it's, number one, it's just mean. And number two, as, as people of faith, they recognize that they had a responsibility to speak up on this one because it was.
Yeah, and it's what's super, because I saw, you mean, it's easy, I mean, we do a lot of work on real policy, health systems. You know, power grid and how do we do it to where we provide affordable, reliable power in a way that doesn't destroy the environment? These are all policy questions. This is not a policy question, this is a straight up or down vote on somebody, on a human being. And whenever you see government, which is power, right? Whenever you see the powerful picking on another human being, that's dangerous. Because right now, it's this population, but then it'll be that population, and it's this population. And then that is a very dangerous thing, especially when we have constitutional norms around equal protection of the law. Where every human being is supposed to be equal under our law. This is a, a legal problem and also a values problem. And so for people, I mean, I'm a lawyer, but I'm also a person of faith. Whenever we see power picking on a minority population based on some immutable trait, we don't have a choice to be neutral. To be neutral is to enable the oppressor. And so it is disturbing to me as somebody who's, I, I do not have anybody transgender in my family. It's, it's not a thing that affects me, but it is a thing that affects me. Because one day, it's the transgender kids and, you know, and all in one session, it was, you know, people of color, the Critical Race Theory Bill. We can't make anybody feel uncomfortable talking about race. Well, our history is uncomfortable when it comes to race. This is a problem. It's also censorship. You know, and then you have 95% growth and a decrease in their representation. These are things that are attacking people based on immutable traits. So we've picked on the trans kids, we're going after people based on race. We don't really touch this issue, but you as an individual might have an opinion about gender and some of the gender issues that came up this session. This is a, this is a real problem where not only legally affecting equal protection of the law, but from a values perspective, do we really think that every human being is equal? Whereas it's like Animal Farm, where we say, all animals are equal, but some animals are more equal than others. And you don't have a choice in neutrality, to be, to be neutral is to enable oppression by power.
Getting a little of seminary Josh today, I appreciate that. So I don't know if the Animal Farm reference was your effort at a segue to the next bill.
But no, but it was pretty good.
So speaking of Animal Farm, the next bill on the list that passed is one that we didn't talk as much about, but relates to the unlawful restraint of dogs.
Yeah, it, and it's good for dogs. It has to do, why the original one was vetoed, you'd have to read the veto statement, I have not. But they have worked out some sort of compromise where they are now protecting dogs a little bit more in Texas. So it's a good thing.
Right, so that's a list of bills that passed. Let's move on to what didn't make it to the finish line, starting with bail.
Yeah, this one's super interesting. If, so let me back up and say, in the second special session, they finally passed a, a big rework of how we do bail in Texas. And that's the best way to describe it. I mean, there's good, bad, but it's a major rework of how we do bail. Part of that bigger effort included provisions that required amending the Texas Constitution, because the Texas Constitution provides a right to bail for criminal defendants. And so the, the SJR, the, the attempt to amend the Constitution took away the right to bail for certain defendants in certain cases. So it is a real policy area, in an area of real policy debate and constitutional rights. And there was a big debate about it, and it needed 100 votes in the House to, to make it to the voters. And it did not have 100 votes in the House. What is super interesting about it, probably more than any other vote, is it does reveal some of the fault lines or fractures or factions, I don't know how you want to say it, but it reveals different, where different people are at within each party. Now, if you look at the vote, it looks like it's party line, for the most part. What's interesting are those who were absent and those who were excused absent, which is a House rule thing. But what it means sometimes is that you're, sometimes you're legitimately absent. You have a thing with your family, or you're personally sick, or you have business elsewhere that takes you away from the House floor for a day. And sometimes they just don't want to vote in public on it. It means they are uncomfortable. It means they are uncomfortable with the policy, but they know politically it's, it's dangerous. So because they don't like the policy usually, but it's dangerous, they are just absent. And, and it's, it'll fix it. You can't really tell whether they were, had legitimate business in the district or whether they just didn't want to vote on it. But as a professional observer of these things, I'm bringing this up because if you look at it, what, what an observer sees is a number of folks from both parties. Both, you're seeing the, what I would call the policy minded elected officials disproportionately represented in the absentee, absentees. Which tells me that policy minded elected officials said, there's a problem with this policy. And, but there's also a danger for us politically, so we're out of here. And that is, is quite interesting because it reveals something about those particular members in a way that doesn't always make itself apparent.
Interesting. So the, the next one on the list, I, you know, just.
And I should back up and say, you see that a little bit with the trans bill too, despite it passing. It's not as clear as the bail one, as an observer of these things, but there were a number of reps who said, this is, I'm walking this vote.
Right. So given the year that we've had and the amount of time we've spent talking about voting and elections, I am surprised to see the elections bill in the failed category. But excited about it, I guess. So talk to us about where we are on elections. What are they trying to do this time?
The super important thing for folks to know is that those who would suppress votes are not satisfied. That's what the, the top line is. We need to understand, so to understand what happened, there were two different bills. And then we need to understand the narrative about how they came to be on the call or not on the call. So let me back up, let's, let's tell a little story to best do it. When they did Senate Bill One, the Legislature substantially reworked a number of criminal offenses. When you rework criminal offenses, you're trying to strike a balance between what are, what are the activities that are illegal and does the punishment fit the crime? Those are kind of your two big questions. What they did in Senate Bill One is they increased the number of things that are illegal. They gave prosecutors more tools to be able to, to convict people, is the simple way to say it. There are more elements to the crime where they can go after you in more ways. And it's not just prosecutors, it's the Attorney General's Office too. So that was a major thing. There's more from a citizen's perspective, there's more exposure to, to doing something that's criminal that could take away your liberty. They also did reduce some of the penalties, uh, from felonies to misdemeanors in the process. Uh, and that's a policy question about whether or not, if something is too super, like, this is a thing that comes up in, in, um, domestic violence cases, is if it's, you know, too, if the punishment is too great, then that will act as a deterrence uh, for somebody reporting the crime because they, they don't want, it, it's so draconian that people won't report the crime. Um, now, this is a policy judgment, um, but, but may very well have gone on when they were negotiating, um, the, these new offenses. I say all that to say, that's what really happened on Senate Bill One. Lawyers by the House, there were lawyers for the Senate, there were lawyers for the governor, there were lawyers for the Attorney General, all of them looked at this and, and signed off on it, uh, and passed it. Uh, but that's kind of where the story gets interesting. The forces of voter suppression, uh, rewrote history a bit. So the history I told you was factual. Uh, they, uh, are rewriting it. They're claiming in a way that polit, that, you know, political operatives do, uh, that the legislature reduced the penalties for voter fraud. Well, now you see how it's a half-truth. They actually increased the number of things that were voter fraud, but we're not telling that half of the story. So this became a thing and it became Senate Bill Ten, and, and Senate Bill Ten passed the Senate. Uh, while that's going on, you then have the former President of the United States jump in and call on Texas to conduct an Arizona-style audit of the 2020 election. And all this happened in a number of hours, uh, on a day, when the governor then responded, uh, by announcing that an audit of four counties was already underway. Um, that's a questionable fact of whether it was already underway, but nevertheless, we're now auditing four counties, Dallas, Tarrant, Collins, and Harris. Uh, and it's, it's underway by the Secretary of State's office. Uh, and then the governor announced that he would add increasing criminal penalties, uh, for voter fraud at the call. So that became Senate Bill Ten. So all this happens at the same time, right? The, the audit stuff and the increased penalties are all kind of tied together in this, this thing. The governor did not add audits to the call. And the governor's, because it's already taken care of, we're already doing it, right? And that was the, the maneuver to avoid, um, that big thing. Nevertheless, the Senate passed Senate Bill Forty-seven, which was an audit bill, uh, even though it was not on the call. The Senate also passed Senate Bill Ten to increase those criminal penalties, uh, which wasn't on the call. Uh, the House withstood that political pressure. Uh, they took the position that, rightly so, that the audit bill is not on the call, so we're not gonna hear it. And then we're not gonna hear Senate Bill Ten because we've already litigated that issue. Uh, we have already addressed it. The Senate already had lawyers, the governor had lawyers, the Attorney General had lawyers. Everybody was good with it, and now suddenly they're not. Uh, y'all have gone back on a deal we had and, and they just weren't gonna play that game. So the House, uh, showed courage and stood up to kind of that, that political bullying that was occurring. Uh, all I have to say, there have already been calls to add these two items to a fourth special session, uh, which is why it's worth continuing to watch.
Yay, more conversations about voting rights in Texas. Um, but seriously though, like, this is going to be a, a, a serious, important issue.
Yeah, even if we don't have a fourth special session, uh, I would bet real money on it being, I mean, I would, I feel quite certain that it, we, that it'll be on a, in two thousand twenty-three. It'll continue to be a thing. I mean, it's been a thing even before, um, the twenty twenty election. It, it's just the twenty twenty election really gave it. Um, I don't know, nitrogen oxide, I guess, whatever the booster is for cars, I'm, I'm probably embarrassing myself and don't even know it, but it's, it's given it, um, um, super juice.
I am gonna note that the siren started going off in your background right when the good Baptist man started talking about betting real money, so. I don't know what that means. Um, yeah. Last, but not least, uh, again, this came up late and we did have a Weekly Witness episode last week, uh, talking about it with Dr. Mark Boom, uh, vaccine mandates. Uh, talk to us about that.
Oh, man. So in the waning days, I think I'm looking at, um, trying to look at it, it was like a week before the end, um, literally. Uh, I think they had not quite moved on the congressional maps yet. Um, I think they were still thinking a fourth special session was gonna happen. It, it's hard to know what causes anything to say within certainty, but it certainly looks like this was a motivating factor for them to get out of town. Uh, in the waning days of a third special, the governor announced in an executive order that private entities are prohibited, uh, from requiring their employees take the vaccine as a condition of employment, just employment policy. Uh, this includes churches, it included us, uh, we are private employers. Um, it includes, is sweeping, it includes every, anybody who has an employee. Um, there are a number of constitutional issues with that for, as applied to faith communities. Um, there's a number of constitutional issues that might come up anyway. Uh, the governor also, uh, in addition to the executive order, added it to the call of a third special session. And, and right away, the House and Senate held hearings on a pair of bills, um, on the issue. And both bills drew very strong opposition. Um, obviously, we opposed it and testified against it in committee, but the, a broad coalition of businesses in the state also, um, really came down hard on it. And it was, uh, it's really, uh, if it wasn't so dang serious, it'd be really interesting politically, um, how you have the Republican Party arguing, making arguments that sound like labor movement arguments from a hundred years ago. And then you have the labor, uh, AFL-CIO opposed the bill, um, making arguments in favor of businesses, um, being able to make these requirements. Uh, it is, I mean, it's quite fascinating, uh, if you can not be terrified by it. Uh, and by terrified by, I mean, the, the testimony committee, which is really, uh, uh, it was just a moment for the anti-vaccine movement, um, to really spread disinformation and, and, and then for legislators to really parrot. That level of disinformation was just, uh, kind of a terrifying moment, um, for those of us that want to just be done with this pandemic. Uh, we indeed signed a letter, um, we were signatories on the letter with the business community opposing these bills. Uh, and, and neither bill advanced out of committee, uh, but there are already efforts underway to make this the, an agenda item for a fourth-called special. There was a, um, a press conference that, um, did it the day after, um, they sounded died trying to, trying to move this forward. So stay tuned. And that executive order is still out there. So, um, I think there will be litigation by somebody if it's ever enforced. Um,
One would assume. Uh, anything else, uh, you have for us today?
No, no. Uh, you didn't ask me how I was feeling at the beginning of it.
Uh, you know, you've, you've thrown enough brushback pitches on that in the past. I, uh, I've stepped away from the plate on it, but, uh, I do feel like all we have done this year is record legislative preview and legislative updates, um, episodes, and so maybe.
Got a lot of them out of there.
Maybe we'll get to figure out what an actual interim looks like on a Weekly Witness podcast. So friends, if you have ideas for what you'd like to hear during the interim, uh, reach out to me at scott@texasimpact.org. Um, all right, one last chance, Josh, any closing thoughts?
Yeah, I wanted to share my feelings.
How are you feeling today, Josh?
I'm feeling envious of you to get into jury duty. I never get picked.
Uh, I've had a chance.
I have gone and they say, you're a lawyer, I don't want you on the jury. And that's why I never get to serve on a jury. And as a lawyer, I'm probably the one person in the room that wants to be there, so.
No, I, uh, I got called a couple of months ago and it was like the day before one of the special sessions, uh, started and I was terrified that maybe they would pick me. It was actually for grand jury and that I'd end up like, anyway, I did not serve on that one, but this time, you know, nothing's coming up. I, I might be excited for the opportunity to serve.
Yeah, I've always wanted.
Kind of lobby for being picked? Is that, is that frowned upon? Do you think they'll find this podcast and disqualify me?
Uh, we'll talk about how you can get on that thing later.
All right. Off, off the record or not recording?
Yeah, because everybody, look, it's a very important civic duty and you should do it.
Yeah. So, all right, well, y'all root for me. How, while you're listening to this, I'll probably, if you're listening, when we post it, uh, I'll, I'll be in jury duty. I'll let you know how it goes. Um, all right, Joshua, uh, thanks for your time. I really do hope, uh, that we get a few months off of legislative updates, um, but look forward to the conversation next time, next time we're able to do it. Um, friends, thank you all for tuning in. I know it has been a long year and we really appreciate you all, uh, continuing on this journey and doing the important work of advocacy, uh, in your communities and in the state legislature. Uh, if you stayed with us this long, uh, I hope you've enjoyed, uh, the content. Make sure that you leave us a rating or review so even more friends, uh, can find it. And make sure you're sharing this content with your friends and congregations. Make sure you keep an eye on Texas Impact's social media, uh, for upcoming announcements. I know we do have an event coming up November thirteenth, but we'll talk more about that in the weeks to come. If you have questions about any of this, you can reach out to me at scott@texasimpact.org. And remember, if you appreciate Texas Impact and the Weekly Witness community, uh, make sure that you and your congregation are members by going to texasimpact.org/join. Y'all, this has been a long year. Uh, this is an unprecedented time in the, the life of the Texas Legislature. And so more than ever, we need Texans of faith active and engaged. So let's get to work.